Good evening. Calling to order, the meeting of Monday, February 6, 2023 will all rise and salute the flag.
Plaid allegiance to the flag, and to the sacred covenant of God, of one nation, under God, indivisible, public, and just as for all.
Roll call of the members. Councilor Cogliandro?
Here.
Here. Councilor McKenna?
Here.
Here. Councilor Morbeto?
Here.
Here. Councilor Novoselsky?
Here.
Here. Councilor Powers?
Here.
Here. Councilor Rizzo? Here. Councilor Sorino?
Here.
Here. Councilor Silvestri? Councilor Silvestri, absent. Councilor Visconti? Absent. Councilor Zambudo?
Here.
Here. And Council President Keith?
Here.
Here. I call, Ms. President, approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of January 23rd.
So moved.
Calendar item number three, that the mayor request the election commissioner to appear before the city council to discuss future election initiatives, as well as the absentee ballot process. Voters have inquired as to the possibility of a receipt in the event of submitting an absentee ballot, advising them of it being received. This is on a motion of Councilor Rizzo.
Councilor Rizzo.
Thank you very much, Ms. President. Uh, thank you very much, Paul, for being here. Appreciate it. I remember when we were going through our budget deliberations last June. You know, we had some conversation, but at that time, you had said, maybe at some future time, I'll come up, tell you a little bit about what's going on down in the election commissioner's office. And so I thought that by putting this motion in would give you some kind of a forum to come up and just let us know what's going on as far as the election commission, uh, the election department is going. And, and, and with that being said, I'll just, I'll kind of put the cart in front of the horse a little bit with one question I have. And it was a question that was brought to me by a resident. And it might make, you know, not that it wasn't a valid question at the time, but it might even be more valid now, given the fact that more and more people are voting by mail. When, when a person votes by mail, typically they put it in the mail and they never hear about it again. And he said, is there a way, a process that somebody, if they vote by mail, can be notified and say, hey, just to let you know, we received your ballot? Whether that is something that can be included in an absentee ballot that says, would you like an email confirmation? Or would you like whatever, you know, just, just food for thought, so that people know if they do drop their ballot off in a mailbox or in a drop box, that they'll know that their vote was actually registered. You know, because there have been cases I've heard, and quite honestly, I'm not even sure if I've heard that it's happening necessarily in Revere. But I have heard where people, you know, have not voted, um, they go, they show up to vote, and they're told that their name's already scratched off on the register. So there, there, there can be some, you know, potential for error. And I just, you know, that's, this is just one question that he had. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor. Mr. Fahy?
Thank you, councilors, Councilor Rizzo. Um, Paul Fahy, election commissioner. To your specific question, so the way that the process works for folks who don't know, is when you vote either by absentee or you vote by mail, your application is sent out. Uh, in the case of a state election, it's sent by the state, which is what you experienced last year. We'll talk in a minute about the municipal elections. The application, if someone wants an absentee or a vote by mail ballot comes back. We check the signature, um, once the ballot is returned. We don't currently have a step in the process where we would send out a confirmation. I would tell you that I think it would be a major challenge. And I, I spoke, I was at a conference last week with city and town clerks who in most communities handle elections, as you know. And, and I raised this question with folks, and I think there was a fairly unanimous feeling that especially now with vote by mail, the, the numbers for vote by mail have really grown to a very significant degree. I can provide you some exact numbers if you'd like them. What we do have are two options. One is the old school, please call our office. And, and we, we say this, we get a lot of calls from people about their mail-in ballots, had they been received, were they sent out. Sometimes there are complications about that. For example, in the primary, a state primary, if you're an unenrolled voter and you apply for a ballot for the primary, and you haven't identified the party that you want to vote in, in that one election, we call. We could reject the ballot outright, but we don't do that. We call and say, Mr. Rizzo, you're unenrolled, which, which ballot do you want? And explain to people that that doesn't put them in a party, that that simply gives them the ballot for that election. So one option is, is we encourage people to just call if, if they're concerned about their ballot. But the other option that, that is helpful, and I, and I know this doesn't work for everybody, because not everyone has the technology. But there's a link on the state website that we will put on the city website, once we start sending out ballots. And it simply is, where my, where's my ballot? If you go on the state, Secretary of State's website, and look at the elections division, that link sits there, but we will put a link to our website. So if you send in your ballot, and you're not sure if it's been received, you know, give it a few days, and then just go online to check. I think adding the additional step of sending out an additional mailing, we have a fairly heavy, as you can imagine, right around election time, and especially as it gets closer, uh, work volume. And it would be an additional step that, um, I think would be pretty cumbersome, to be completely honest. So what we'll do is we'll advertise these two options. Again, what, we, I always say to people, anytime you're not sure about anything. You mentioned about ballots, sometimes, you know, the post office is the post office. We don't control it. Sometimes ballots do get lost, particularly if somebody is, you know, close to election time. And it's, it's, it's terrible when that happens. In a case like that, people, you know, if you called and said, the deadline's past, I haven't received my ballot, what we would tell you is, I know this is not optimal, but you can come and vote on election day. Now, if we receive your ballot before election day, we will count it, and you'll be told on election day that we did receive the ballot. So there are different scenarios like that that happen. So I don't think I would be in favor of us adding an additional level of then sending, you know, you send the application, we send you the ballot, you send the ballot back, we have to process those, prepare them to go to the polls, to then add an additional step of an acknowledgement that would go out to people, I think, to be completely honest, would, would be really difficult for us. But we will advertise these options for people who have questions. Either they can look it up, or they can certainly call our office to find out if the ballot's been received.
Any other councils? Thank you, Mr. Fahy.
Thank you. Um, I know there were a couple of other items.
Yep. We're gonna ask for suspension of rules, so we can take a few things out of order. But, um, so, uh, place this on file. All in favor? Madam Clerk, request a suspension of rules, would like to take up, uh, the other items regarding, uh, the election commission, and then also the late motion. I know there's a number of residents in here that, uh, Council Powers is wishing to address. So, all in favor of suspension of rules?
Calendar item number 10, communication from the election commissioner, requesting approval of the preliminary election date for 2023.
Uh, Mr. President, members of the council, um, there is a requirement under state law that, that the council approved the preliminary date, um, and then the calendar flows from there. You, I've sent you a draft of the calendar on the assumption that this date is approved. We've run this by the Secretary of State's Elections Division to make sure all the dates match up. There have been a couple of changes since maybe the last time. Those of you who were on the council two years ago, there were changes in the Votes Act. So this, um, recommendation of Tuesday, September 19th, as the preliminary date, would trigger the dates that are in the calendar. And again, all those dates sync up based on, on state law relative to, um, uh, registration deadlines and so forth. So if you're, if you're, if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them. If not, I would ask for a vote in, in favor of setting the preliminary date so that we can plan accordingly.
Council McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have a, um, I just have a, uh, concern. During the governor and Lieutenant Governor's vote down the Beechmont School, you had a, uh, display, um, a board, digital board. But when you went in there, people still didn't know where to go. Um, we really need signs down there. We need, we need more lighting too. But it's far in the gym, and we need to direct people. People will go into the left, going into the auditorium, instead of going to the gym. And I was down there for a while. I'm sorry, I just ran up the stairs. Um, not in shape. But, um, we just need more signage.
Counselor, I, I know we've talked about this before, and it is, it is a, um, an ongoing process. Um, I think the signage has gotten better every time.
Yes, I think that digital board is great.
Absolutely needs to be improved.
But once you went to the parking lot, you don't know where to go.
Yeah.
Because the, the digital boards on the, um, on the street.
What we're looking at, and, and this-
Thank you.
This may require, uh, well, it will require resources. Who's kidding who? So it'll probably be in the budget for 2024. If you can visualize the, the colorful banner signs, that are probably, at least as tall as I am, maybe a little taller, having those in locations like the schools where it would be very clear when you drive in that that would say, vote here, as opposed to a small, you know, some of the smaller signs that you see in, in lawns and so forth. So, uh, we've got those kind of sandwich board signs at the, at the high school, Ward Three. That's helped. But we want, the next step is just to, these bigger signs, just to get people's attention. So absolutely. It is, it is. Yeah, we've got some lighting issues in a couple of the locations that we need to work with. So, point taken.
Thank you, Councilor, Council Powers, and then Councilor Morbeto.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, the, uh, Ward Five Precinct Two, which is the old church on Revere Street, the old St. Teresa's Church. When I went in there to vote the last election, it was pitch black. You couldn't see your hand in front of you if you, you know, it, and I think that's, I know there's talk about going to the Paul Revere School, okay? I don't know where that is right now. I haven't been apprised of that. But I would like to make sure far in advance that when people go in to vote, that area is very well lit, and there's adequate signage to direct them. Otherwise, in fact, one time down there on the, the, one of the doors on Ford Street, they had a sign that said, vote here. So if you went over to that door, and you went to pull it, it was, it was locked, because actually to vote, you had to go around to the back. So I'd just like to make sure, make sure that that's addressed.
Yes, Counselor, we, we'll be coming back to you with the requests for polling location changes. We have discussions at the board. I think they will be minimal, but I would expect that you will see a change along the lines of what you just described.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Councilor Morbeto?
Thanks, Mr. President. You know, as my colleagues express, um, concerns about the lighting situation, I too have concerns. I think one of the, one thing I would suggest, if you ever seen those, um, construction lights that they use, they're extremely bright. They'll use them like during the winter months. Um, that may be a temporary fix. Cause at Beechmont School, for instance, it's wondering where the entrance is, and you cannot see it. It's pitch dark. I know where the location is, because I've seen it a billion times. But for everyone else, it's just a hard find. So I think that may be a temporary fix. Look into those construction lights. See if we can rent them, or, uh, for, or something of that nature.
Thanks, Counselor.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other councils?
Mr. President?
Council Rizzo?
Just one more question. It's about, about a specific polling location. Just to be clear, there's no more voting at the Jack Satterhouse?
Counselor, perfect segue. Thank you. Um, as you remember, when the redistricting was done, prior to my coming on board, the Jack Satterhouse, the only precinct five-one, five-one A was eliminated, because there was no legal requirement to have a five-one A relative to the legislative district. So the, from that perspective, it wasn't necessary. We made the decision, as five-one has both the Point of Pines neighborhood to the north, and the area around Jack Satter to the south, to use the Point of Pines neighborhood, but to do early voting, um, initiatives at the Jack Satterhouse. You supported a legislative petition, which was successful, uh, at the end of the last legislative session. So, uh, we have reconfigured VRIS, the system to, five-one A will be very, very similar to what it was, and Jack Satterhouse will be a polling location again, uh, in the future for five-one A. So that's a result of this, of the home rule petition that you did approve. And, and I know there were a couple of petitions that didn't make it through at the end of the legislative session, but that one did. So there will be five-one A.
Council Powers?
Five-two, which was normally, uh, the Jack Satterhouse. That's where the St. George, 320 Revere Beach Boulevard, and a couple of other areas. Will that go be going back to the Satterhouse? Because it seems to me like a shame to send people that live on the boulevard all the way up to Revere Street to vote.
That's a decision that the commission's gonna have to, um, consider, but it's certainly open. The, the Jack Satter, five-one A will definitely vote at Jack Satterhouse. It's the possibility that five-two would vote there as well.
I think five-two, in my own opinion, five-two should belong to, just for the sake of the constituents. They shouldn't have to walk up to Revere Street.
I mean, we have both locations, frankly, so, um, it's, we're gonna look at the numbers and make a recommendation.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. So on the communication, roll call vote?
Pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 54, Section 103P, shall the city council fix a date of Tuesday, September 19th, 2023, for the 2023 preliminary election? Councilor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes. Council McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Council Morbeto?
Yes.
Yes. Council Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes. Council Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Council Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes. Council Sorino?
Yes.
Yes. Council Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes. Council Visconti?
Yes.
Yes. Council Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Council President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the date has been fixed.
Thank you.
Calendar, calendar item number 11, communication from the election commissioner, requesting that the city council opt into early voting for 2023 municipal elections.
Mr. President, members of the council, um, this is a communication that I would ask you not to act on immediately, and I'll explain why. I wanted to make you aware of it. Under the Votes Act, which was passed last year, early voting and mail-in voting, uh, as you experienced last year, is, is required for all state and federal elections. It is not required for municipal elections, and there are two different approaches to how it's dealt with. The vote by mail requirement, cities and towns can choose to opt out of that by a vote of their legislative body. I've asked my board, and we're recommending that the City of Revere not do that. You know, people, clearly, from the numbers that, that you've seen anecdotally, and that I can share with you, clearly, people do vote by mail in, in fairly large numbers. At the conference I was at last week, a lot of towns, um, you know, it's a very different environment, small towns that have, you know, poorly resourced, uh, clerk's offices, frankly. Great people, but they just don't have the resources to do that. I believe that, that we do. So, um, I wanted you to be aware that we, we're not gonna recommend that. The early voting is different. Under the Votes Act, that requires the Board of Registarians, or in our case, the Election Commission, to vote to recommend that, which my board voted, uh, three to zero, one of the members was absent, uh, to do that. Um, and then it does require council approval, uh, to opt into early voting. And we are recommending that, that the City of Revere do that. The reason I'm asking you to hold off is that I would like to, we have plenty of time. I'd like to see what the election looks like, to be totally honest. If there's, if there's a lot of interest, if there's a lot of people running, if the regional, if, I'm sorry, if the, um, hybrid school committee does become a reality for the fall, we have plenty of time to make that decision. I, I would hate to have a long early voting period, if it's a relatively non-controversial election, and, and more importantly, if there's a lot of activity, a lot of interest. Um, I wouldn't want to have too short a period. So we have plenty of time to make that decision. So I'd, I'd ask what, you know, based on your rules, that maybe you hold this, send it to committee, um, and then I'd like to come back to you sometime after, you know, May-June timeframe, maybe before the summer, uh, and, and make a recommendation to, to, because there is an expense. Um, just quickly, we get reimbursed by the state for a significant amount of the costs associated with early voting and mail-in voting for the state elections. We're looking at a reimbursement in the area of $35,000 or so, um, which, don't worry, I have plans to spend it. But it would be nice to get that money back. Locally, we don't have that, because it's not a mandate. The city can choose to opt out. We're, we're strongly recommending that we don't. So if you could keep, I'd be happy to answer any questions at this point. If, if, per your rules, you could keep this on file. I just wanted you to be aware of it. Particularly, Council Rizzo, to your point, people are asking these questions, which is great. Uh, please refer them to me if there are any questions. Sometimes there's confusion about, about this process. It's a little complicated, and it is new. But, um, happy to take any questions. If not, would ask you to just hold this for further action.
Thank you. I know there's a few. Councilor Cogliandro?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, through you to Mr. Fahy, uh, thank you for the updates today, sir. Just because you mentioned it, do we have any update on the school committee changing towards, if that's actually happening, and if it is, when we might be able to see that?
The only information that I have is probably what you all have. It did not pass at the end of the last legislative session, and having worked in the legislature, I know the rules. You have to start over again. Council Sorino knows this in his day job as well. Um, I, so I don't know what's gonna happen beyond that. I know I've spoken in person to at least Rep. Janino, and she's gonna attempt to move it forward. I just don't have, we'll be ready, whichever way it goes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other councils? So it looks like the, it's a will to have a little more discussion. Like to place this in Legislative Affairs. All in favor? And then, uh, while we're on the suspension of rules, if we can take up Council Mor, um, Powers, late motion, uh, number 19? Does everyone have that on their agenda?
It was emailed.
Okay.
Late motion presented by Councilor Powers, that the city council request attorney Jerry D'Amrosio to appear before the city council to discuss his client's proposed development of a nonprofit educational facility at 84 Arcadia Street.
Council Powers?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I'm having this meeting this evening, because there's been a lot of conversation going on in the Oak Island area particularly, about what I support and what I don't support. I can say this from the beginning. Approximately several days ago, maybe a week and a half, I received notification from someone telling me that there was being, uh, a pro, a, a project being planned on Arcadia Street. I think it's either 86 or, or 84. They have two addresses on the building. To allow for, uh, Chapter 40, Section A, Part Three, to be used to put a development down there that consisted of, uh, 24 or 26 beds for homeless people. Now, I'm not against homeless people. I think there are, particularly the, uh, cold we just experienced this past weekend. It hasn't been nice. However, you know, I, anytime I have a, uh, a hearing or a meeting, that I think is important to a neighborhood, whether it's Oak Island, the Point of Pines, or North Revere, I make sure that the people are notified properly. So what I suggested to the attorney was that Arcadia, Ellerton Yark, Argyle, Beverly, all of those streets, the residents, be notified that there was a, a proposal, and what the proposal was. Under, uh, under the 40B Act of the state legislature, not the city council, state legislature, they can come in and they can build without required zoning, without required city council approval or anything else, with the exception perhaps of the, uh, you know, the, uh, health department, or different, uh, fire department, et cetera, et cetera. So anyway, I went ahead and I told the attorney that I wanted a meeting, and I wanted all of those streets notified, and they had a meeting down at, uh, Santorini's. Okay? Seven o'clock, this past week. And as a result of that meeting, I think some people assumed that I was in favor of the project. I'm not in favor of the project. I never was, and I never will be, in favor of putting a, a unit with 24 or 26 individuals that are homeless into that area, into any neighborhood, okay? Oak Island, I've always supported Oak Island with many things. I don't know about anyone else, but I mean, uh, the drainage problems down there were crazy on those streets I mentioned. I remember going down to Arcadia or Ellerton Street, six inches of water. You couldn't walk from one end to the other unless you had boots on. We just spent, past, since, during my tenure as a city council, over a million point five dollars on flood issues down there. We, we just recently cleaned the Eastern County ditch. But I'm gonna take it a step further. A year ago, it was proposed down there that four or five, uh, townhouses be built on the same property. I went down there, I had a meeting with the neighbors. I, I, I think, uh, I know Michael Tucker was there. I think Stephen Fiore was there. And I think, uh, Margot, uh, was down there. She lives at the end of, uh, Arcadia Street, right directly near this. And I told the developers down there at the time, there was no way I could put, I could support this. We had just spent money, dollar after dollar, on the flood area. We're finally getting it straightened out. And I made that very clear to them. And I made it very clear to the attorney, that I was not gonna support it, and I would lobby against passage of something like that, which did require a special permit on the city council. No question about it. Week later, they withdrew their proposal. And I also got them to clean up part of the property. But anyway, I need to make my position very clear on this, okay? I'll work with, uh, the city, our legal department, whoever else I have to work to, to stop this project. I am going to ask the, uh, the developer, who is a Oak Island resident, I understand, to withdraw his proposal. It's not good. And when you put 24 or 26 individuals sleeping in one large room, uh, in a neighborhood, walking up and down the streets, because most of these people don't have vehicles. So that's the only way of transportation they have. They have to walk from one, one end of Arcadia down to the next, to get where they're going. I have made a suggestion, okay? I think we all, everybody in this room, I would say, cares about homeless people. And they should. And I do, and I know the mayor does, and everybody else in the city does, just about everybody else. What I've suggested is a McKinley School, which is closed. There's nothing in it right now, as far as I know. Take a small portion of that. Sin Coppin is in there under the direction of Mr. Donnie Chamarra. He's superintendent of Public Works. And, and by the way, he's done a tremendous job. He just finished, this past fall, cleaning the Eastern County ditch, which runs from the Wonderland down to Arcadia Street, and then goes out to the, the tracks out on the B and M tracks. But go down, take part of that, little part of that McKinley School. Put, uh, put some plywood petitions in there. People say, well, it doesn't have heat. You can go over to Home Depot and buy some heaters. Do it heat an area like that.
Point of information.
We all, I, I think I know where you're going, Council.
Point of information.
Go ahead. Point of information.
Thank you, Mr. President. Revere Boxing Outreach is in the McKinley School. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's fine, but it's not taking up the whole school, I don't think.
Council Powers, just continue on, and we'll finish.
So I, I know they could put some petitions up, put some heaters in there, portable heaters. You can get them at Home Depot. I mean, if the, my heat went out tonight, and was gonna be out for a few days, I'd go over to Home Depot and buy some heaters, get it straightened out. So we have the resources to do that. And that's something I'm going to ask the mayor to do. I think it's important. I don't think you can leave people out on the street. This type of weather, it's wrong. And, and secondly, if that building were done, down on Arcadia Street, it wouldn't be done for a year and a half or so. So that doesn't solve the problem of people being homeless. So again, I want to make it very, very clear that I'm against that building. Anybody, I understand there's petitions going around. Anybody that's taking petitions around, I suspect, I don't know, but I suspect they're doing it for political reasons, that they want to run for the council. Let them run. Good luck to them. All right?
Counselor, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Anybody have any questions?
Counsel, Counsel, I got this. All right? Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. Okay. I just wanna, I know a couple of the councils wish to speak. I just want to say a few things. Councilor Powers, you know, he, we gave him some latitude tonight. He's bringing up a, a subject that honestly is not in front of the city council at all. And hasn't, and to, to our record, has not, there has been no petition filed for this, uh, potential, um, house or whatever it, it is. And I, and, and there's, there's a lot of smart people in this room that know that, yeah, there has been some, apparently it has been some talk. I was notified just this weekend by some residents in the area. Um, but the people that have, are probably up here tonight, know there, there is this, this Dover Amendment, that it doesn't go in front of the city council. So just want to make sure you understand this. Whether Council Powers is in favor of it or not, is really irrelevant. Whether I'm in favor or not, is totally irrelevant. So all 11 of us have zero vote on this. It doesn't look like it would, will become a council, uh, agenda item. And from what I read up on the Dover Act, because you do see, hear more about this happening in different communities, not just Revere, is they just have to follow basic zoning requirements when it comes to height, dimensions, size, and, and et cetera. So, and again, it, it stinks that when we have these things taken out of hand. We don't love that. We, that's why we, we like, we like being here. We like to be able to have community input. But we, we, we don't have the ultimate say on everything. You know, we just can't play that role. So I know a couple of the councils wish to speak. I, I think there was, um, there's, there's residents that wish to speak. I, I don't know if there's one person that's gonna just, you know, I'd love to ha, hear, have your voices heard, but where it really isn't a council issue, we really can't go on about this all night long. But I'd be happy to give a few residents a chance. Uh, I know that there is a, a specific few people that have requested and sent emails. I'd be happy to give a few residents a chance to talk about it. And I appreciate, we want you to be heard, but understand that this is not a council, it will not be a council vote. If they want to build 35 condos, it'll come in front of the council or go in front of the zoning board of appeals. If they want to build, you know, a two, four townhouses, and it needs a special permit, it would come in front of us. This potential Dover Act is what's gonna protect these people from doing what they can do. And we have no say in that. So again, whether we agree or not, it's, it's really irrelevant. So Council Silvestri, pardon me? Council Silvestri?
Thank you, Mr. President. And, uh, first, I, I would like to say thank you to all the residents that are here tonight, because this is what politics and, and it's all about, is the input from the city. But you took the words out of my mouth. Um, this will not come before us, and, and we could all be against it and, and This will not come before us, and we could all be against it and stand out in front of the project every day and scream and shout, but it's not, it won't come down to us. But I have received a few phone calls, and I did some research on this. And I've heard in the calls that I received that it's possibly gonna be a methadone clinic, it's possibly going to be used for all these other resources. First of all, that's an illegal use, they can't do that there. There will be wraparound services if you need tech services, job services, if you are struggling with substance abuse, you can get assistance at the facility, but it's not just strictly for people struggling with substance misuse, and I just want everyone to know that. I'm not for or against this project. I actually just found out about it Saturday that it was proposed to happen, but in the research that I've done, we, again, we don't get a say, but it is not going to be any of the things that I've mentioned before. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. And again, Counsel Rizzo wish to speak. We want to hear what you have to say. So this is not any of us silencing anyone. We could say, "No, this isn't a council," it shouldn't even be, honestly, it shouldn't be on the agenda. We want to give some latitude to the residents, because we do care about your input and we appreciate your community feedback. And so I appreciate Counsel Powers putting this forward. Just understand that, we're trying to hear you, don't take it on us. I just found out about this Saturday. So Counsel Rizzo, and I haven't formed really any opinion on it. Counsel Rizzo?
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and I appreciate the opportunity to talk on this. I don't think I can say it much differently than other councils that have spoken. If we had a vote on this, we would vote against it. And I completely understand why the residents are all here tonight, because they're fearful of a facility like this in the middle of their neighborhood. Just as an example, I don't know how many of you follow these meetings, but the administration created a warming center down at the senior center, and, you know, for people, and of course, you want people to be warm. I always have, you know, I contend there's other places, but nonetheless, you know, it does bring in people that are at risk, and that changed the, you know, changed the face of the neighborhood. Just as an example, since January twelfth of this year, just January twelfth, we're just barely into February, there have been thirty-nine calls for service at the warming center. Thirty-nine. So I don't know how that, if it does transcend over to a facility like yours, but thirty-nine calls for service, according to the Revere Police Department's records. So, you know, there is legitimate concern that neighbors have, and protecting their quality of life is something that we all try to do. That should be one of our jobs as well. I mean, of course, we have to provide fiscal oversight, but we have to be voices for the neighborhoods. And while we might not have a vote in this, I think we can bring some negotiation skills to this and meet with the developer, meet with the attorney, and say, "Look, for the good of the neighborhood, how can we work together to put a project there, understand it's land that you own and something probably has to go there or may need to go there?" I'm not that familiar with the property itself, but I think we can still, to the extent possible, and even if it's through the mayor, you know, talk to the mayor. "Hey, you need to sit down with the attorney who does an awful lot here in this city. He represents an awful lot of people in this city. He requires votes up here in front of the city council all the time, and he's always, and, you know, he's a tremendous attorney for people, you know, who hire him. He's able to get things done." But I think that's where we can play a role in asking the administration to meet with the developer and meet with the attorney and try to come up with an alternative that's gonna protect these neighbors. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other councils before I? Counsel Zambudo? And then I'd like to give a few people an opportunity to speak, absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. President. Not to beat a dead horse, but I'm not optimistic, and I don't want anybody to leave here with a feeling that we can solve this problem. We can't. This is a law, and unless we can convince the owners and the developers to take a different tact, there's nothing we can do. So just so, I always tell the truth, and I don't want anybody to leave here with false hope. Hopefully, some of us can talk to the developer and work with them and convince them something else should go there, but right, if I had to say tonight, I'm not very optimistic.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Visconti?
Thank you. And I could see the residents' point. You know, you've got residents here that have probably been in that area for well over twenty, thirty years, okay? And when you have somebody just coming in saying, "This is what we're gonna do, you got no say in the matter, we're gonna do it whether you like it or not," it's frustrating. And you can see by the faces that are out there, they're all frustrated, and I know if it was done in my next, if it was done next door to me, I would be frustrated and aggravated. So while it's unfortunate that we, as a city councilor, can't vote against it, I understand and I sympathize with your frustration, because I agree with that, because I don't like anybody coming in to my neighborhood telling me that, "No, we're gonna do it whether you like it or not," and that's wrong, okay? So like my fellow colleague said, and colleagues, both Counsel Rizzo and Counsel Zambudo, I think it's worthwhile for us to reach out, and whether it's through the mayor's office, to reach out to these developers and let them know that, you know what? Residents aren't happy in that area, okay? They're not saying that they don't want something, a service like that, but they don't want it in their backyard or as a neighbor. It's right? So I think it would be, it would be best that we have the mayor's office, as well as, I think it's the mayor's office that would have to reach out to them and hopefully negotiate with them and see if it can be placed somewhere else and not put something like that in an area that the residents don't want. That's it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Morbido?
So, looking at the project, you know, do I believe we need something to help people, homeless people in the city? Whether you're on east side of Revere or west side of Revere, I think anyone's gonna oppose it in their neighborhood. Counselor Powers did say that the developer is a resident in the neighborhood. Maybe he will be a good neighbor, maybe you guys can have conversations with him, and maybe he'll pull out. Have you guys already had a conversation with him? I know through you. But at the end of the day, it's true. They can do what they want, but as a council, we can put some pressure on them. But at the end of the day, I hate to give you some BS and say, "Yeah, we're so powerful, we're city councilors, we can stop this, we can write a letter and be like, 'Yeah, we don't want this.'" At the end of the day, there's the zoning, there's the law and what they can do, but what you guys can do is, you can advocate and get the media involved. That's what you can do.
Thank you, Counselor. I know that there's some residents that want to speak. I guess, just by a show of hands, how many people wish to speak, and if there's gonna be, so just a few? If you want to line up, that'd be great, we give you the three-minute rule. And again, I just want to say this one, for the, we hear you, we, this is why you're up here tonight. You reached out, you wanted to be heard, and we're doing that. So please, please respect that and know that this is just for discussional purposes, we're not voting on anything tonight. This is gonna be placed on file after that. Please step to the podium, name and address for the record. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, council president and members of this council. Counsel Powers covered a lot of the issues that I was gonna speak about, but to sum it up, there was a flyer that was passed out throughout Ward Five, and many of my neighbors did not receive this flyer. I received a call at about ten minutes of six from a resident that was at the meeting and asked me where I was. So I got my car and I rushed up there. I seen the flyer on the table, and the flyer said, "Come to Santorini's tonight and let's discuss a residential educational building for eighty-four Arcadia Street." A residential educational building. That sounds pretty good, right? I mean, that sounds, if you get home from work and you see that, you may not even go, because it sounds something promising. But after listening to Attorney Dambrosio's dissertation, he told us that it's actually gonna be housing by twenty-four beds of people, men and women, from the homeless population in the city, as well as men and women returning from detox facilities. With that being said, I'll state that myself and every resident that I've spoke to, to a T, which I have forty-two residents written down and a list of another forty that oppose this, agree that a type of facility like this needs to be built in Revere, but it does not need to be built in the middle of a thickly settled residential neighborhood consisting of children, lifelong residents, and senior citizens alike. I'm not the one to tell you where to build this project. I'm sure there's different options on the outskirts of residential neighborhoods, Broadway, next to a police station, maybe next to a hospital. That's not up to me, but it doesn't belong in a thickly settled residential neighborhood. The way this meeting was handled was completely underhanded. We were told that there's nothing we can do about it, it's being done by matter of right, so don't even bother fighting. The question I ask is, where do we live that an attorney can talk to the residents like that and tell them they're doing what they're gonna do? I'm not gonna accept that. I have two nineteen-month-year-old twins, and my responsibility is to fight for their safety, and that's what I'm gonna do tonight.[1307.51][1307.51](applause) Many of the residents here also have children that play basketball, play hopscotch, and in the same street. So it's not a facility, the facility doesn't fit in that type of neighborhood. So we're out here asking you tonight as a council to help us. We need your help. I'm not pointing any fingers, I'm not blaming it on you, you or the mayor. We need help from you. We know that you don't have a vote on it, but we also know that most, if not all, people on this council has a good relationship with Attorney Dambrosio. Counsel Rizzo said it, he does a lot of business in this city. He represents all the developers. So I'm sure if this council as a whole asks the attorney and this developer to withdraw his project, I can't see him saying no.
Agreed.
And if he...[1361.13][1361.13](applause) And if he does say no, there are times that they come up here for special permits, they come up for variances. Well, I would expect that those developers and attorneys are held to the letter of the law the next time they come up here, because they're sticking it to the Oak Island residents and putting it in there where it doesn't belong.
Agreed.
So I don't want to keep going on. The last comment I'd like to make is, unfortunately, Counsel Powers made a comment about someone running for public office. This flyer was printed out by an eighty-four-year-old lady that lives in our neighborhood, and three of us went and passed them out. I'm the one with the best legs in the group. So for some reason, I'm getting the blame for the one that's doing this. So I don't know why you make an accusation about public office, that has nothing to do with this. The last place I want to be right now is in this city council. I want to live with my family, I want to live in a safe neighborhood, and I want you guys to protect us.
Amen.
Thank you for hearing me tonight. Have a great day.[1425.57][1425.57](applause)
Thank you.
I'm sorry, forty-two people are here tonight, and I have a list of forty who are opposing it. Can I hand it to the clerk?
You may.
I don't know how many of you are here tonight.
Just say, okay.
Dr. Speaker. Number forty, please register with the clerk before we leave.
Hi, guys.
Name and address for the record, please.
Maureen Sullivan, ninety-seven Arcadia. Now, I just saw something funny in this room, and I said to the people, "Are you the developers?" And they're laughing at every one of yous when you make your comments, and they're saying what the mayor just said, "What country do we live in?" They go, "America."[1467.13][1467.13](laughing) And that's why I stood up. You see that sign upstairs where you...
Ma'am, 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 please address this, ma'am.
Yeah, that's what I'm addressing. That's not right.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Be the littlest.
Come on, if you can just jump in line, there's just a couple more. Thank you. Thank you. Name and address for the record.
Anthony Pozziale, fifty-one Arcadia Street, about four houses away. So I'm a little, my daughter's here tonight, eight years old, a little frustrated with, I feel like the buck is being passed. Everybody understands that you guys don't have a vote on this. As I see it, the building inspector has the first shot to say no. If he says no, it goes to the zoning Board of Appeals. They have a shot to say no. Everyone continues to tell me, he's saying that they can't say no, but they can. They can say no on the balcony size, they can say no on the lot size, they can say no on the parking, they can say no on public safety, they can say, they can say no on a, yes, they can! They can!
Sir, 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 please.
Sorry.
You're a hundred percent right, they can absolutely dictate the size, the lot space, and the height and things like that, one thousand percent.
And public safety.
Public safety, I'm not sure where that would, but as far as the lot size is...
Sorry, sorry. I spent the entire night reading decisions of Massachusetts versus everybody when it came to the Dover Amendment last night. The Dover Amendment wins every single time. He's right, it always wins. But I expect the city to fight for us. This is why you guys are public officials. So I expect you guys to go to the building inspector. I don't care what excuse the guy comes up with, he says no. And then when the city gets sued, I expect the city selector to fight for our right to not have that here. This is why you guys are city councilmen. This is why you, this is, here. Last night, I shouldn't be up worried about the safety of my daughter. This is why we elected you guys to worry about that stuff, to worry about the police, to worry about what the mayor's doing, to hold the mayor accountable. I sent the city selectman a note, he sent me the law back. I wanted to tell the guy, "But you don't think I looked up on it?" So I want to bring up a public safety issue with the street, and then I'll be done. Arcadia is a dead-end street. I don't know if a lot of people are familiar with it, I know that Mr. Powers is, and by the way, thank you for taking my phone call, you're a good man, for listening to me. I've lived on this street for ten years. I own big dump trucks that have two-wheel drive on the back, and they get stuck in the snow all the time, very, I don't, it could be like a thin sheet of snow and they get stuck. I have watched people, the Capital Waste, UPS, you name it, go up and down that street now that you can either back down or you can back out. I used to laugh at it all the time, never thought it was a problem. I would never drive my truck down there. Last winter, eighty-one Arcadia, who is my neighbor, it's right across the street from eighty-four, they had to call 911 because their baby had an emergency. Thank God it wasn't life-threatening. The ambulance got stuck on the street right in front of eighty-one Arcadia, right in front of eighty-four Arcadia. The ambulance got stuck in the snow. Me and the rest of my neighbors, we had to go out there and we had to dig the thing out, the fire department was there, their truck was stuck. You can ask the department that got called, I'm sure they have it on record, here is my concern. Like Mr. Rizzo said, did you say thirty-eight calls or something like that to the center? So thirty-nine calls. I'm guessing that EMS is gonna get called an awful lot onto that road. God forbid it snows, and one of these people is having a life-threatening situation, and they can't get out, and they can't get saved because they got stuck in the snow. I know it seems hypothetical, I know it seems like it would never happen, but it did happen. And that would be on the city council, that would be on the mayor, that would be on the board, the zoning committee, that is gonna be on the building inspector, and for the people that are going to be there, if, God forbid, they have some kind of a, I don't want to, who knows what happens in those places? But if something like that happens, everybody in this room is gonna be culpable. The mayor's gonna be culpable. Even the chief of the fire department should be down here, and I guarantee you, if you talk to him, he'll say that Arcadia Street is a nightmare to get public services up and down that road.
Thank you.
So thank you for your time.[1746.41][1746.41](applause)
So we have two more? If you could just, because we just want to, this gentleman, are you looking to speak? Then two more? That's it? All right, two more.
Sure.
Would you like? Thank you.
My name's Doug Brecker, I live on fifteen Arcadia Street. So, sorry, I'm just, this is very frustrating, so I have a bunch of notes here, and I'm just gonna try to be as reasonably keeled as possible. So my background is I work as a dev as well. I come from a development background, as well as I own a brokerage. I recently moved here because I really, really like Revere, and this is very scary for me. So I'm just gonna go through a bunch of stuff. So you guys are saying that the Dover Act allows that, and that this is not a religious or an institutional center for specifically drug treatment, you're saying it's housing education, and that we can't do anything. We, as the... We, as the residents, actually really can. So, for example, myself, I can, I can oppose this illegally, and I can get a bunch of the people in this room, and I can say, "Hey, everyone in this room, I, I, I will spearhead this from a legal standpoint. We can oppose this, and we can stop the development. Even if these guys can't do anything, we can, and I can help spend the money to do it. My name is Doug Brecker. I live on fifteen Arcadia Street. If you would like to be involved in stopping this at this level, please let me know. My email is dbrecker87@gmail.com, and I'm happy to spearhead this and really stop this."
Mr. Brecker. No, Mr. Brecker, thank you. And those were good comments, and you're a hundred percent right. You know, from a, it's, and I'm just being honest, and again, you, you can hate us for our honesty, and we, we are here showing you support, but yes, the residents can file litigation, one thousand percent. The city, so, so, so you're, I mean, I can't, I'm not gonna get, you can, don't get angry at me for giving you the truth. You've read it. You can file litigation, one thousand percent. And, and I, and I hope that, hope that the people, the neighborhood gets what they want. So we're, the city will not file litigation in behalf, we're just telling you the truth. You know, so, you know, so, um, we did, so, and you, do you wish to speak, Ms. Last?
I only said, I wished that was said from the beginning. Yeah, I would like to say something. I have a question, actually. My name's Christina Gordon. I live at fifty-eight B Arcadia Street for twenty-one years. And my question is, the attorney involved in this project said that there is no crime going to be there at, at this Beak Cove level. Is it true that there was a shooting in Revere at the other Beak Cove on either Ocean Ave? Ocean Ave? Is that true? Did somebody get killed? I don't want this on my dead-end street, John.
And there's been multiple bad things.
Thank you.
I can't have this on my dead-end street with little kids. I can't.
Thank you.
Point of information, Mr. President. And, and yes, I, I just want to make it clear that if, if Beak Cove isn't involved in this, which they, which I'm hearing they are, the facility in Boston is, is, is a, is a dispensary of, it's a methadone clinic. Beak Cove also does mental health facilities, so it's, they, they can't dispense, so they're, they're two different places, they're just, no, no, I just want, I want, he's, he's, he's saying that the Beak Cove in Boston has a lot of issues, which, which he's right, but the Ba, no, I know, but they have hundreds of people coming in from all over the state daily going to that place where, where this, they're, no, 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 but I'm not saying that. I, I completely respect the neighborhood and whatnot, but I'm just trying to make it clear that the, the Beak Cove in Boston is a total different facility than what this would be. And I get it, you're against it, and I fully stand by you for being against it.
This world behind Arcadia Street, that if somebody gets thrown out of that house because they don't follow the rules, do you know where they're gonna live? In my backyard.
Thank you, Councilor, Councilor Silvestri, thank you. We're just gonna have the last one, last comment, and then we're gonna, we have to move on to the rest of the agenda.
Good evening. My name's Ned Almeda, forty Arcadia Street. I just want to make it clear that I, I've lived in the neighborhood six, seven years
Can you just have some respect? As a person at the podium, please have some respect, and everyone, thank you.
Over the years, our neighborhood has changed quite a bit. It's gotten a lot younger than what it was even just six years ago when I moved in. I, myself, have a three-year-old. We have a lot more children in the neighborhood now than we did before, most of whom thankfully are outside most of the time, especially in the warm months, riding the bicycles. I, myself, have two teenage daughters as well, who take our dogs for walks throughout the neighborhood in the day and at night. I don't particularly feel comfortable with them being out after dark now, let alone if a facility, facility like this is added to the neighborhood. I don't want to generalize or stereotype people in these types of situations, but when, you know, you, you, you've already, Councilor Rizzo has highlighted that there have been issues with the warming station. That's an alarming amount of calls in a short period of time. You didn't elaborate on whether those were medical emergencies or security issues, but in, in any case, you know, Arcadia Street and the surrounding neighborhood does have plenty of streetlights, but they are set far apart. There have already been a string of auto, automobile break-ins on the street. I, myself, have been a victim of that, as well as some vandalism. There have been many incidences of homeless already sleeping in the, the playground, which is just a few blocks away, as well as the access road that runs along the backside of Arcadia Street. It's a prime location. Myself, my wife have spearheaded a, a big cleanup of that area. Councilor Powers is aware of that. Most of, of the, the cleanup was drug paraphernalia, tents, and other living accoutrements. So, you know, a, a facility like this is a good idea somewhere, but our neighborhood is certainly not set up for it. I understand that you guys don't have a vote in it, but you certainly can lend your voices and the, the weight of your positions to support the residents. So, you know, thank you for making it clear that you don't have a say, and yes or no if this happens, but I would like to hear that you, you, you have our backs on this situation, and that you're not just going to leave it to the residents. We'll take care of it ourselves, that I'm sure of, but it will be a lot easier, and it will make us feel a lot more comfortable and have a lot more confidence in this body of power if you lend your support as well.
Thank you. So, last comment, please, because I, we have to work this out.
I promise, I'm gonna get out of here. The Dover Act keeps being thrown around. I've been trying to get an answer, is, is the Dover Act being implemented and executed right now by Attorney D'Ambrosio's and his clients, or is he saying he's gonna potentially use the Dover Act?
Thank you. So I'll answer that question to my, to the best of my knowledge. So, again, this hasn't been filed at all. This has not been filed. There hasn't been anything filed in front of the city clerk, because we're done with the communication. All right, nothing has been filed. What I will say is the progress, the process of getting things done, whether it's the Dover Act, or if you're building a single-family house on any street, site plan review has to come first. So as you're following this trail, site plan review is a public, public body. They meet usually here, I believe, Councilor, Clerk Melnick. They meet here. You can attend those when site plan file, if someone files and they go to site plan, there's public safety officials there, so yes, you did make a point about public safety. Police, fire, engineering, building, et cetera, all of them here, they, they see the plans, and they review, and they give their findings. So when it comes to dimensions, lot size, setbacks, parking, height, you name it, all that gets, that's public safety, and what their response is. So that happens at site plan, that's step one, and then it goes into, of course, if they're not able to meet that, then it could go to zoning board of appeals, but I imagine if someone is going to try to attempt to use the Dover Act, they, they are going to try and follow it by the letter of the law. Again, I don't know, but when something is filed, then that'll be the next step.
Powers, it's a most of the residents here can't even build a driveway and have you anything without going through.
I just said, I just, I just said it needs to go in front of the site plan fir, I just told you that that's what has to happen.
Mr. President?
So, based on that, they can't?
Mr. President?
Hang on one second.
I think he wanted to speak.
Well, you know, Council, Council, I got it. All right, we're finishing up, all right?
So every house that goes to sale, they can just buy it, and according to the Dover Act, they can build anything they want?
No, it's not anything, I just said, we just, come up to the podium, please.
I, I was trying to, you said.
Well, I mean, because I asked five times if anyone wished to speak. We're not having a full, okay, go ahead.
Okay, we've heard multiple times.
You're taking this out, but the thing is, is you're taking this out of the city council. We, we've shown nothing but support tonight, and it's very disrespectful.
I understand, I'm just frustrated, it seems that way, but I'm not actually taking on you guys. But all I keep hearing is that it's done, we can't do anything about it. Well, you guys can't do anything about it, right? Because of the Dover Act, or because whatever. So any, every house that goes for sale, they can, they can just buy it, right? The same developer can buy it and can build the same thing, the same facility, right? And you guys can't do anything about it.
What, what I'm saying is, is it does not go in, so if you wanted to build a fence, it wouldn't come in front of the city council. If you wanted to build a driveway, it would not come in front of the city council. Is, it, certain things do and do not come in front of the city coun, that's what we're trying to explain to you. Okay?
I, I understand that, that you guys can't do anything about it. And I heard before that somebody, I forget who it was, there was, if this happened in my neighborhood, I wouldn't allow it. I guarantee you that that person wouldn't sit here and say, "I can't do anything about it," but that person will fight for it not to happen if it was next to his house, okay? So what I'm saying is that this, and it will happen, a lot of these houses will go for sale when this develops. And personally, I'm a dead-end street, and my driveway is the biggest driveway. That's where all, every single car turns to me, and I have a four-month-old. So I, I can say that my residents are watching out for, for my kids, and when they're making that U-turn there, how's any other service, ambulance, anybody that comes here, how's they gonna make a turn? They're gonna make it on my driveway. The other thing I'm saying is that for me to build a patio, for me to go and have this driveway, a hardtop, I have to go through hell, come through so many meetings here. At the end of the day, they still don't allow me. But this facility has a huge driveway that, for some reason, there's no problem with it.
Well, no, they'll have to follow this. If, and I'm just saying hypothetically, can, can I answer the question?
No, no.
Hypothetically, if they in fi, in fact file, they have to follow all of the same building, reasonable building and zoning regulations that anyone else would have to file. The only thing that they're, you know, this is potentially using this Dover Act, which I'm not gonna pretend to be an expert on, because we haven't faced much of it, there are a few of these buildings in the city that probably haven't, again, don't come in front of us, or they've been in existence for some time. They have to follow the same building and zoning codes that everyone else has to file. The only thing that they're, they're, the act is, is allowing them to do is use it, and again, it's fancy words, there's no doubt about it, is transformative or educational and, and church. The same thing is, and I hate to say this, it's not the same comparison, but if I wanted to buy that property and build a church on your street, it would be the same thing. I could say, "You have no say on it, I'm building a church." Now, again, it probably wouldn't be a good moneymaker for me, so I don't know if I would do that, but they, I, I would have to go in front of the site plan review and say, "I'm building an educational church school," something like that, and they would say, "Okay, you need to build it, but you can't have a twenty, you can't have a five-foot setback, you have to have a forty-foot setback," or twenty. So all the same regulations and codes that you have to follow, building, fire, safety, all that, they have to follow. Again, it's the use that no one's happy about, right? And you ask for the support of the city council. I can, I'm, I'm looking across the room right now, I don't know who hasn't shown that they're gonna support you in at least some way, shape, or form. Again, it can't, maybe it's not by vote, but maybe it's by picking up the phone, like a couple of you have asked, okay? We can't retaliate, and I'm not suggesting that anyone suggest, we're not gonna retaliate, we can't do that, but we can certainly pick up the phone, contact people, and say, "Hey, is this the best idea?" Okay? And that's something that I think that you've gotten a commitment from, pretty much, I think that every one of us is gonna be questioning this project, one thousand percent, okay? Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. President. Excuse me, Mr. President. Mr. President, if I could just say something real quick? To the, to the last gentleman, just for clarification, because you are right, you were talking about medical aides and stuff like that, about, about the warming center. Yeah, there've been thirty-nine log entries, a lot of them were directed patrols, there was a couple medical aides, one unwanted person, you know, so, but my, you know, the bottom line, you take any average piece of property around the city, whose house out here has thirty-nine log entries on it? Probably not many in that, in that period of time. The last thing that I would like to say, excuse me, Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Mr. President, the last thing that I'd like to say is, I'd like to offer, I'd like to offer a motion that will, will...
If you feel the council that wishes to speak?
No, 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 I, I would like to offer a motion that the city council, that the city clerk draft a letter on behalf of the city council that expresses our opposition to the project at eighty-four Arcadia, and that at least we're on record with him, so all of us are on record, so that he knows that the city council is united in this decision.
Thank you. Before we do that, Councilor, Call Leandro?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, Councilor Rizzo just, just kinda took one of the things I was gonna say. I remember during the, the whole parking meter dispute down the beach that this council got together and sent a letter as a council, even though we didn't have a say, we sent a letter as a council in support of getting rid of those meters. We can do the same exact thing right now. We can do the same exact thing. Now...
Is there a motion on the floor?
Excuse me, I'm not, I'm not finished. Everybody else has their time, I'd like my time as well.
Yeah, please speak, Councilor Cogliano, please speak.
Thank you, thank you. Is anyone, are, are the Nakazian brothers here, or is there a representative from RCH, the construction company? Because that's what was emailed to me today. So nobody said, okay, so we, we can't, we can't talk about that. And I, I just want, there was, I can, I can say to you guys with confident, no, stop. I can say to you with confidence that that gentleman and the two gentlemen that just left are not part of all that.
They were laughing on their way out, and the entire time of this meeting, you can see them smirking and laughing.
I promise you, sir, I understand that. I promise you that, that, I promise you that's not them.
All right.
Excuse me?
We're not gonna debate here.
Do I stand, I, I, I don't stand to, excuse me, I'm not gonna have a conversation like this.
Council, let's not debate that all year, please.
You've been disrespecting the rules all night, sir, and I've tried to be polite to you. Thank you, I'm sorry, Mr. President.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep, Councilor, you finished? Thank you. All right, Councilor Powers?
One last comment. This meeting here tonight is a result of a meeting I had at Santorini's. And if I hadn't had that meeting at Santorini's, they would probably be going along their merry way, and no one would know about it. So that's the reason for that meeting at Santorini's and this meeting here tonight. Thank you.
Counselor, Counselor Visconti, and then on, no, you're good? Counselor Rizzo, would you like to go on Counselor Rizzo's motion? Counselor Powers, okay, so please, in regards to Counselor Powers' motion placed on file, communication placed on file? And on Counselor Rizzo's motion?
Verbal motion by Counselor Rizzo that the city clerk draft a letter in opposition of the proposed project at eighty-four Arcadia Street. Counselor Cogliano?
I want the attorney to come up here. That's the reason for the motion.
The communication's placed on file, that's...
There's a one on file.
Go ahead, Ash.
I think that communication had the attorney.
Come up here and answer, Counselor. Madam Clerk, and that the letter is sent to Attorney D'Ambrosio.
Your motion is on the floor.
All right. We're gonna go back to Counselor Rizzo, Counselor Powers' motion. He'd like, he'd like to request that the attorney appears before the city council to propose, and a proposed development. Okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
On Counselor Rizzo's verbal motion, now, that the city clerk draft a letter in opposition of the proposed project at eighty-four Arcadia Street, the letter shall be sent to Attorney Arcadia Street, the letter shall be sent to Attorney Jerry D'Ambrosio. Counselor Cogliano?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morbido?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rizzo? Yes, Counselor Sorino? Yes, Counselor Silvestri? Yes, Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counselor President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the motion has been approved.
Thank you. And we appreciate you being here this evening.
Regular order of business.
Back to, back to the regular order of business, all in favor? Five-minute recess?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Two-minute recess, please, all in favor, two-minute recess.
Okay. Call to order. All right, call to order, Madam Clerk?
Calendar item number four, hearing called is ordered on a loan order in the amount of $350,000 for drainage system planning bonds.
Mr. Fiske. Oh, this is a public hearing, so asking to open it up to any proponents, any proponents in the audience? Mr. Fiske?
Good evening, everybody. Rich Fiske, 281 Broadway. I am here to speak in favor of the proposed bond order for water and sewer infrastructure. It was part of the fiscal year '23 capital plan, and we're here to request the bonding authority to do these necessary repairs. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Being a public hearing, any other proponents in the audience wish to speak?
Good evening, Council President. Don Charamello, Chief of Infrastructure and Engineering, 215 Rice Ave, Riviere. I'd like to just give you a little overview of this bond that we're looking to get approved. It's for drainage planning and design for some of the drainage projects we have throughout the city. You know, during rainstorms or storm events, a lot of the inadequate drainage that we have in the city kind of, really kind of, is very obvious. So basically, in the city Riviere, we have only, well, a third of the city Riviere has adequate drainage. With the less, a little less than 11 square miles of area, we only have about 4,500 catch basins, of which are all connected to each other, which they shouldn't be. They all should have a drain main and separate laterals to each individual catch basin, so that if one gets clogged, they all don't work. It's not, and it's not just that, it's the fact that the amount of area, paved area that we have, there is really no room for water to permeate through the soil, it pretty much all sheet flows and travels long distances without being, without being, without us able to, to, to control it with catchment, which would be catch basins or trench drains or what have you. So this order would help, this bond would help us facilitate some of the drainage problems that we have in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Still an open, uh, public hearing? Any other proponents? Hearing and seeking none, we're gonna close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Any opponents wish to speak? Hearing and seeking none, we're gonna close that side of the hearing. Counselors?
Mr. President.
Counselor Novoselsky.
Thank you. Mr. President, through you to Donny Charamello, if I may. Mr. Superintendent, is there any progress on the county ditch along the Blue Line and along Standish Road?
So interestingly enough, I've had conversations with a gentleman, he's a director of maintenance, his name is Joe Goita, with the MTA, MBTA. And we had a conversation just yesterday. So now, I actually have good communication with the MBT, MBTA, because I think for many years, I think a lot of it landed on deaf ears. I think we have a people in place. Matter of fact, I just forwarded some of the contacts to House Speaker Jessica Janino yesterday of some of the good contacts I have at the MBTA. So I've asked them to at least, I mean, I know they can't get out there tomorrow and start dredging a lot of these ditches that run along the MBTA lines, but they can at least put it on to their capital plans, so that there is some light at the end of the tunnel. Without, without them, without them putting into a capital plan, it could never really be funded, and it can certainly never be implemented if, unless that they're at least planned for in their budgets. And there is, so far that I'm aware of, there is none. So I specifically talked about the ditch behind the Garfield School. It was so inundated with sediment and fragmity that there is basically no flow in that. You know, we, the mayor had asked me to, to look into the feasibility of dredging Sales Creek, and I do have proposals from engineering companies to quantify the amount of material that's in Sales Creek. That would be, you know, the, the amounts that would need to be removed, classify them to where they would need to go, to what landfills they would need to go, because there probably would be elements in there that would probably be, have to go into landfills where they, to be handled properly. But I don't, I can't move forward Sales Creek unless the MBTA dress, addresses their drainage issues up the, upstream, because it really kind of all starts from around O Square, where the ditch is very, very small, and then it progressively gets wider down to where it enters Washburn, Slus Gate, right behind One Beachmont, and then crosses the Parkway and over to where the HYM site is. So, like I said, I have contacts, if you'd like, when I email the MBTA, I can certainly share it with the counselors if they'd like to see some forward momentum with the MBTA, because I do think I'm starting to gain a little bit of traction with them.
If, if I may, your definition of Sales Creek, is that along the, your definition, behind, along Standish Road and behind One Beachmont?
That's correct.
So why wouldn't we empty that first and then allow the water to come out? Because that goes, goes right back into, on the other side of the Riviere Parkway, and they put a new header wall back there.
So if I clean Sales Creek, and this sediment starts migrating down the creek, you know where it's gonna end, it's gonna end up in Sales Creek, and then I'm gonna have to duplicate my efforts again. So if you clean upstream, right, now you have a clean ditch. If I clean downstream, there's nothing to run down from upstream back downstream.
But the upstream has no place to go, because it'll be blocked in the meantime until you get Sales Creek done.
There is, at least there is some movement in Sales Creek. It's not, it's not completely, it's not completely inundated with sediment. It's, it, the way, the way you clean any ditch, you start, you know, it's just the way we did it. We did it with Eastern County, with the Eastern County ditch. You start upstream and you work your way down. For instance, I started dialogue with the DCR to clean the townline brook. We have monthly meetings on that now, and we finally have real, real good momentum with that. Now, if Everett doesn't wanna clean their end of the townline brook, and Malden doesn't wanna clean theirs, well, it doesn't behoove the city Riviere to clean ours, because their sediment is gonna come down into our clean ditch. And then the millions of dollars that we would need to spend to clean ours, we would just be kinda doing their work and, and saving their money, because all their sediment and material is gonna be washed down into ours. You know, there's a saying about, you know, it all, yeah. So that's just the way it goes. And I don't wanna, I'm not trying to save people money, I'm not trying to save the MBTA money and, 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 and put it on the backs of the city Riviere residents to clean their material that they should've cleaned years ago.
Also, let me say...
So unless they, we should hold their feet to the fire.
Okay, that header wall, going from Standish Road under Anashia Road, that's all messed up, because the drain pipe is facing up in the sky.
Well...
You know, so how can it go anywhere when that drain pipe is not going anywhere?
Counselor, Counselor Novoselsky, there are, there are numerous problems in the city Riviere, you're just describing a few of them, and I say, this is a saying, I could, I can walk 20 feet in either direction of the city Riviere and find something wrong. There's no question.
Sir, I've been going through this for 20 years, that I haven't got any cooperation from anybody to get that area cleaned.
Well, you know, it's difficult, and we're here today, tonight, looking for money to fix what? Drainage. Water. Things that just, you know, were put on the back burner, and not just in the city Riviere. It was, it was done like that throughout the whole country. Again, people have heard me say this before, and I, you know, kinda, you know, beating a dead horse. People, the, the, nobody cared about what's underneath your feet until you can't get a drink of water or your toilet doesn't flush, you know, then all of a sudden it's an issue. And, you know, we're getting, we were, you know, a lot of places in this, in this, in this country are getting to that point. You've seen pictures of our tubercolated six-inch water lines. I mean, a six-inch water line in the city Riviere, it shouldn't be. A six-inch water line was put in there in the early 1900s, or 1933, when one of the biggest infrastructure poachers were, were done in this country, and particularly in the city Riviere. Those, so those lines, you know, 1933, the city grew, the li, but the, 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 the lines didn't grow. They shrunk, they shrunk because they got tuberculated, that's the water. But the drainage lines are the same thing. Drainage didn't grow. As we paved, as the city grew, those same clay drain lines, and they're clay, are the same small four, six inch, when in fact, a drain line should probably be, probably about 36 inches in diameter for the city, just to convey water. It's all about the amount of flow, amount of, how much it rains out, how quickly it flows, and how fast you can convey the water from one point, from point A to point B. If not, it's like standing in a bathtub full of water, pull the plug, do you see, does the water just disappear? No. It just swirls around, swirls around, it takes a time to get out. So that, in fact, is the same thing that we're trying to do with the city, just, you know, grow the pipes.
Thank you. Counselor McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Is anyone asleep?
Donny, I know how passionate you are about water pipes, because I've seen you on one of our community meetings bring a decrepit water pipe up and show everybody. So I know how passionate you are, I know you wanna take all the water pipes in Riviere, the 100-year-old water pipes, and replace them. I, I do know, I've, I've seen you...
107 miles of them.
I've seen you in action, I've, I've walked the streets with you, I know, I do know. I do have two questions still for you. Green Creek in back of Lee's Trailer Park, when will that be done?
So I talked to, his name is Joe Mueller, he's a, an attorney for the owners of the trailer, of the trailer park, spoke to him today. They've got all but about one trailer moved from along the, the, where I need to access the ditch. He has one person that, that it's, she's, you know, the person is still there. Once, I, so I told him, I envision, I have permits in place to clean that. I envision being near this fall, cleaning, from upstream, downstream. And we're gonna start at the 54-inch outfall that comes across, that comes underneath Lee Burbank Highway, that has a 12-foot pile of sediment in front of it, that stretches 600 feet long. And that's, so we're gonna, so I propose it would take us, the city, three years to, to, to clean it, take a couple of feet off the top, take a couple of feet off the top, take a couple of feet off the top, because I have to page as opposed to this material. So I, so to answer your question, I might, I, I predict that we will be there this, this fall cleaning it.
Thank you. And I know we've talked about this, and I'm an advocate for Pearl Ave, but if there's anything we can do, we just had three and a half feet of water in January when we had that storm, and they're getting it from both sides, they're getting it from the marsh, and they're getting it from the, the ocean, and a lot of cars were ruined because they didn't expect three and a half feet of water. And I know you've been advocate, you've been an advocate to clean that pipe on, in Shark Beach, I know you showed me pictures and everything, but we really need to do something for those residents.
So you see what we do down there, every storm, we go down there and clean the outfalls that are owned by DCR. But they're owned by DCR, but the city Riviere ties to them. So, but we do, we do, before every storm goes down there, clean them. I send you videos before and after. Also, we did just purchase 4,000 sandbags, so I do have a plan to, to, I have to talk to the, to the Fire Department and the Police Department, I do have a plan to sandbag the end of Crescent without, to extend, basically, essentially extend, extend the wall. So we would be able to stop tidal action from, from inundating the Pearl Ave area. The marsh, though, is, is unfortunately a different story. I don't know what I can do to, to, to... Okay?
Thank you very much.
We're gonna have, we're gonna, we're gonna do a separate subcommittee, just for water infrastructure throughout the city. We're gonna bring the Engineering Department, so any, any other counselors? Just one before we vote on this one, Don, this, Mr. Charamello, this is all water consent decree, correct, money? And water sewer enterprise funds?
So consent decree is different, you know, SRF program is different. This is strictly, so the 350,000 is for, obviously for drainage engineering work, for projects that we see that we would like to, to, to take on. So we have a project on...
So, yeah, I understand. So is it coming out of the water in sewer enterprise fund?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. Just wanted to make sure. Not the general fund?
No.
Okay, thank you. Okay, all in favor? Oh, sorry, Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Shall the city council approve a loan order in the amount of $350,000 for drainage system planning bonds? Counselor Cogliano?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morbido?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers? Yes, Counselor Rizzo? Yes, Counselor Sorino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counselor President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the loan order has been approved. Calendar item number five, hearing called is ordered on a loan order in the amount of $1.5 million for drainage system improvement bonds.
Being a public hearing, we open this up to any proponents in the audience? Proponents?
Good evening, Mr. President. Rich Fiske, 281 Broadway. I am here to speak in favor of this bond for important infrastructure work with our drainage operation in the city, and it was part of the fiscal year '23 capital plan, that was part of the budget, which I'm happy to have distributed to everybody, bound copies last week, I hope you got them, but now we're just executing on those bond orders. We took care of the page-a-go stuff earlier, and I hope to have your support on this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents?
I'm back. Don Charamella, Chief of Infrastructure and Engineering for the City of Revere, 215 Rice Ave. So, there is, some of this money is definitely, is earmarked for a particular project. It's been a hot issue. And it's the drainage issues that we have at the Griswold Park. So, when the park was designed, it was designed on a floodplain. And I think the expectations were is that, you know, the water would just kind of dissipate or, you know, permeate through the ground and it would just, you know, disappear. It's not, that's not the case. There are a lot of times when, you know, games have been, having been canceled or you've got players standing in mud or what have you. And so, we have designed a drainage improvement project for that Griswold Park that would pump water, pump all the collected water out into, out into the wetlands and onto the town line brook. So, that's one of the projects that this money would be earmarked for.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Hearing seeing none, close outside of the hearing. Any opponents? Hearing seeing none, we're gonna close outside of the hearing. Any councils? Counselor McKenna?
Donnie, I have a question, sorry.
Is it relative to this?
Yes. I just want to know when that water is pumped out into the wetlands, is it filtered?
So it goes into what we call a storm septa. So, no longer do we convey water from Ketchment, Catch Basin, to a pipe to the wetlands. Right now, what we do is we put it through what we call a storm septa, where it separates any contaminants, pretty, you know, much motor oils, bottles, papers, things like that. We don't discharge any of that material into a wetlands area or body of water anymore. That's just not the way it's done.
Thank you. Any other councils? Okay, Madam Clerk?
Shall the City Council approve a loan order in the amount of $1.5 million for drainage system improvement bonds? Counselor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morbido?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselfski?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers? Yes, Counselor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, and Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Keith? Yes, the loan order has been approved. Calendar item number six, hearing called is ordered on a loan order in the amount of $6 million for water main bonds.
Being an open hearing, we're gonna ask any proponents wish to speak? Proponent?
Good evening. Rich Viskay, 21 Broadway, here in support of the water main replacement bond for $6 million. We've been doing a ton of work on our sewer infrastructure over the last several years, and the water mains have been deferred quite some time. And as I'm sure Mr. Charamella will be able to tell you, we have plenty of water mains that have been tuberculated down to a critical mass that we want to start to replace them throughout the city. And this bond will help go a long way towards fixing that water infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents wish to speak?
Don Charamella, Chief of Infrastructure and Engineering for the City of Revere, 215 Rice Ave. So, again, like my colleague had explained, that I think water work has been deferred in the city. And again, I feel that water work is probably one of the most important things because it sustains our life. It, you know, we make our coffee, that's how we live. It gives us life, the water gives us life, but it also protects us during fires. And what I have seen through my years in the city is that one of the first water breaks I attended was down on Library Street. And I was a little horrified of the tuberculation in the six-inch water main. The six-inch water main was tuberculated down to two inches. So it was essentially having a two-inch line running the street, trying to bring, trying to distribute water to all those homes. So, I made it my point to address this neighborhood, the neighborhood that it's going to encompass encompasses 16 streets. Library, Sewell, Elm, Bixby, Low, Haddon, Victoria, like I said, 16 streets. And I feel with this money that I will be able, or the city will be able to upgrade all the water lines for a major area that will make a difference in the amount of water that we can bring not only to the homeowner, to the residents, but also be able to supply to the firefighters in the event of a fire. So, it's 11,000, a little over, just about 11,000 foot of water main replacement. You know, you're talking a couple of miles. And the second part of this project, which will be the following year, will be Olive Beach and Harris. Then, at that time, I'll have a major area where the distribution for a whole neighborhood will be upgraded. And I think it's absolutely money extremely well spent.
Mr. President? Thank you. Any other... Oh, I'm sorry, you're still in the hearing. Any other proponents wish to speak? Hearing seeing none. Any opponents wishing to speak? Hearing seeing none, we'll close outside of the hearing. Councillors, Counselor Rizzo?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Just a real quick question, actually two questions, Donnie. One, first off, does this water main work fit in to our consent decree? Or was that only for sewers and drains?
So, the consent decree is strictly sewers, strictly.
Okay. So this has nothing to do, so this money, this $6 million is going to be in addition to any money we have to spend with respect to our consent decree?
Unfortunately, it is, yes.
Okay. And we don't know how this is going to impact the water rates? You know, we don't know what kind of an impact it's going to be?
That would be up to Mr. Viskay to be able to explain.
Okay. Well, okay, so it has nothing to do with the consent decree? We can talk about what that's going to mean to the rate payer because, of course, we're still getting hammered with the consent decree. How close are we with the consent decree? Just within a matter of, you know, do we have a timetable on when this is going to be?
We have a timetable, but it's, you know, unfortunately, it's years. We're just about done with the lining of the sewers. So, we're about, I think, at 84, 85 percent, maybe even a little higher, with lining all of City of Revere. That was like the easiest and the quickest thing to do. Not that it wasn't cheap, but, so, you know, I think, I think you've seen videos how water, groundwater would infiltrate the sewers. The sewer mains or sections of clay pipe, that's what they were, you know, 100 years ago, that's what they used. And at every two feet or so, you have a joint. And at that joint, the hydrostatic pressure of the groundwater would shoot in. And so, not only are we conveying, you know, sanitary sewer, but we're also have a mixture of groundwater. And, you know, I think you've heard the statistics, you know, probably 100 times. The City of Revere consumes 3 million gallons of water a day. Every day, it's a static number. We use the same amount of water every day, unless we're fighting a fire, I guess. But, you know, we make our coffee, we wash our clothes, we take our showers, 3 million gallons of water a day. But we discharge 7 million gallons. Where's the 4 million gallons coming from? 4 million gallons is coming from...
But that number's got to be coming down, the inflow and infiltration, it has to be, right?
Oh, it definitely has come down.
Yeah. So, well, in any case, I appreciate it, you know, I appreciate the information. It would be good to know what kind of an impact that it's going to have because they do break out water sewer and, you know, be, you know, good for us to know what kind of impact this $6 million vote's going to mean to...
There's no question about it.
And by the way, fresh water is, I mean, we need it. So, I mean, I'm not suggesting that we don't invest in our infrastructure to provide fresh water, clean fresh water for our residents. We have to. I just want to know what the impacts are.
Yeah, I understand. Drinking, potable drinking water, clean water is one of the most basic, you know, services that we have to, you know, obviously supply. And, you know, the thing is, is that I had really, we have no really way of conveying it in any real quantity to the city when a pipe is a six-inch pipe, which is, a six-inch pipe is only something that I would connect a hydrant to. The mains are eights, twelves, and sometimes even 16-inch diameter pipes that we're conveying water to. Because I have to convey enough water, enough volume, to everybody's home and obviously to the firefighters. You know, and it's not the pressure. You know, I have to, I'm mandated to deliver at least 20 pounds by the DPU. But, you know, if there was, you know, if we had the unfortunate event of a fire and the fire department had to connect to it, the pumper can give them whatever pressure they need, 100 pounds, 200 pounds, it doesn't matter. The pumper does the work, that's what it does. But I need the volume to deliver it to the truck. I need that volume. I need to give them as much water as we possibly can. And, you know, through a six-inch line tuberculated down to two, I'm delivering nothing. So, when you go to a water break and you see these pipes, when you cut into them, you go home with a, I go home with a consciousness bothering me because I know that area, I'm not delivering water. So what do you do? And so, I've talked to the administration and said, listen, we've got to, you know, we've got to bite the bullet and just spend this money. Because we have spent millions of dollars on the consent decree, but that's only conveying sewage. We haven't really addressed the drainage issues and we certainly have addressed the water issues, the water distribution system. So, this at two miles, and the two miles we did last year and the three miles I want to do next year, it's...
Well, Donnie, this is why, this is why I asked the question because, you know, this is just yet going to be, and it's a scary proposition. We haven't even addressed the water lines yet. We're spending millions and, probably in the hundreds of millions over the last 13, 14 years for our sewer system. We haven't started talking about the water lines yet. And we're talking about all, it was hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars. We have to be cognizant of what we're spending.
But, you know, I'm sorry, but you have to take a picture of time. What was spent prior to these years? What would go back 20, 30, 40, 50 years? I can tell you, not a lot was spent. Not a lot was spent. I can go on record here right now. If you want to try to pull out some of the financial records, I don't, I see what the system looks like. Not, not a lot was spent. Deferred maintenance. So, we can do nothing. That's exactly what they did, you know, what I think was done years ago. But that's turning a blind eye to the problem. I get it. Finances, I get it. But, you know, what's, you know, a fire at one home, jump into another home, or jump into another home, what's that worth? Put a price tag on it. So, I'm not willing to.
Mr. President, I want to thank Donnie. Donnie, you know, it's not a matter of a price tag, it's a matter of people's ability to pay. We have this conversation in the City Council all the time. So, I understand, there's a lot of needs, and they have to, you know, a lot of them, we have to meet. But, again, let's at least do it with knowledge.
Counsel Rizzo, I agree with you, but I live in the city, I get skin in the game here. I'm a taxpayer and, you know, I understand. I certainly understand people's situations, I get it. But, you know, what's the worst of, you know, of each evil? I just don't know. Do I just, when I see a tuberculated pipe or a whole neighborhood that I can't deliver volumes of water or even sometimes pressure, do I just go home and say, eh, you know, I'll wait, I'll let somebody else care about it? I bring it to the administration, we'll try to, you know, weed through the issue, the financial issues. I think with Mr. Viskay's help, you know, I think we can do that, so.
Thank you. Any, anyone over here? No? Counsel McKenna?
Thank you, I forgot what I was going to say. No. I just want to say that Sewell Street's been underwater for 20 years. You know, I get calls all the time for them. And also, half of the streets that he named, they really have to be fixed. So, that's all I have to say. We really need a solution to Sewell Street.
That's the master plan. The master plan is to invite National Grid in to replace the cast iron leaking gas mains that leak gas into the atmosphere, is nothing but a greenhouse gas. And, oh, by the way, you're paying for it. Then, let's go and address the water distribution system, the drainage issues, and pave the street sidewalks where they don't have them and do it the way it should be. And then, we won't have to visit these streets because there's no leaking gas pipes, there's no leaking, there's no water breaks, you know, that sometimes I have 100 a year. Drain, we can collect stormwater drainage properly and the street is paved and there's sidewalks and maybe we don't have to revisit that street for another 20 or 30 years and leave a little bit of a legacy, you know?
Counsel, Counsel Powers?
Excuse me, Donnie. Last year you did work down on the Bay Road area and I think even part of the Oak Island area. Were those six, eights, or...
So, in some places, we had a four on, a four-inch water line on Elaton. Four, four?
That's who you took out?
Yeah, yeah. Now they're all eights and twelves, so, yeah, so...
I've seen some of those lines and they're terrible.
Yeah, so that's a whole neighborhood that we did. Matter of fact, the neighborhood that was here tonight, those streets all got done.
Except Arcadia, we didn't do that.
Arcadia was already done.
Yeah, exactly.
Already there was new, or new water line in Arcadia. And we did a neighborhood up.
The Bay Road.
The Leonard, the Lawrence, we did Sears. We did that whole neighborhood last year.
Okay. I saw that because I saw all the work you did down there.
Yeah, we've done some big chunks of the city. And, you know, Pomona, Ambrose. Off Streets, and we have, you know, so this neighborhood, that, you know, this 6 million bucks is 16 streets, 16 streets in that neighborhood. And then, hopefully, the following year, we can do Beach and Harris. And now I have a huge area that all is new water. But, I know, I understand Counsel Rizzo's concerns with money.
Counsel Powers?
Go ahead, go ahead.
You good? Counsel Visconti wish to speak? Counsel Visconti?
Donnie, did you say that Sewell Street will be getting fixed with this money?
So, no, this is water. The drainage...
The drainage and...
That's the 350,000 that you improved.
Oh, that's well spent, okay.
That's design, yeah.
That's design, and then, how long do you...
And I'll be here looking for money for drainage improvements.
Okay, how long before, because those people, I feel so bad for those people on that street.
So, we're doing, so along with this, along with this water work, we are doing some of the drainage issues, some of the blaring ones that are very obvious. So while we have the streets open, we have some of the drainage issues we are going to address right away.
Okay, down in that area?
In that area.
Okay, great, thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President.
No problem, thank you. Any other councils? Okay, Madam Clerk?
Shall the City Council approve a loan order in the amount of $6 million for water main bonds? Counsel Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Morbido?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Novoselfski?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the loan order has been approved.
Mr. President, would it be possible through you to, Rich Viskay, I mean, can we get numbers on what that might mean to rate payers in terms of the overall rate for water, the water side of the water sewer bill?
I could certainly try to make an attempt on what it means. I mean, bonds that are authorized today means that the work could probably be done in, you know, over the year. And then when we finally bond that, that bonding schedule will then come out and that particular debt will be part of the entire system. And I may be able, you know, I can't get, you know, precise...
Fair enough, so it's still going to be for a little while anyway, so, but, you know, I do...[1797.81]
But, you know, I can certainly get bonding schedules just to get, you know, what it is year over the year, but at this point, you know, we just get the authorization, we'll do the work, we'll sell the bonds, and I can at least try to give you some idea on what a six-million-dollar water bond means for water rates. But, it may not be with six sigma accuracy, but I'll try my best.
No problem at all, thank you, Mr. President, thank you very much.
Pursuant to Rule 23, the following motions or communications are being reported out of committee with a recommendation to be placed on file. Calendar item number seven, motion presented by Counsel Morbeto, that the mayor requests the Board of Health to look into implementing a temporary citywide indoor mask mandate to help slow the surge in COVID-19 cases.
Place on file.
Calendar item number eight, communication from the election commissioner requesting feedback on polling locations.
Place on file.
Calendar item number nine, motion presented by Councilors Serrino and Fiori, that the fire chief appear before the city council's public safety committee to discuss the state of the Revere Fire Department's fleet of trucks and their maintenance.
Place on file.
Calendar item number twelve, communication from Joseph Spinazzola, presenting information on the foundation trust grants available for Revere. Dr. Spinazzola reached out, he was unable to attend, and he just requested that be tabled.
So, we're requesting to table this until the February 27th meeting. All in favor?
Calendar item number thirteen, communication from the city auditor relative to the appropriation payment for Revere TV.
This is a roll call vote? Any questions from the council? Okay.
Shall the city council approve an appropriation in the amount of one-hundred-sixteen-thousand-nine-hundred-seventy dollars and seventy cents from the Cable Access Receipt Reserve Fund for the purpose of paying Revere TV's quarterly invoice? Counsel Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Morbeto?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Serrino?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the appropriation has been approved. Calendar item number fourteen, motion presented by Counsel President Keith, that the mayor be requested to include in the FY '24 budget a position for a public safety human resources manager.
Any councils? Counsel Serrino?
Thank you, Mr. President. Do you have a dollar amount in mind that you're thinking of what this position would be?
Sure. Well, I was looking at the human resource department, so I would think it would be someone in that, you know, I wouldn't say entry level, but as a human resource manager, those range between probably sixty and eighty thousand dollars from an annual salary, you know, just looking at kind of the standard. Obviously, we have a human resources chief, so this person would probably report directly back to that person, so I don't know if it's more of a management level. And I guess if you'd like me to explain a little bit more of my rationale? Sure? Oh, Counsel Zambudo?
I don't question your rationale, I think it's probably needed, but I think it probably should go to Ways and Means, and we can talk it over.
Sure, absolutely. Yeah, and again, if I can just bring it up that, you know, ultimately.
You can elaborate.
Yeah, this day and age, and any employee that has a hundred, a hundred and five, two hundred, and if you lump in all public safety, you can throw the fire in there too. A few hundred employees, you know, I think this, a standard practice would be to have a human resource professional. And that doesn't always mean, you know, someone within the ranks, because I don't think you, you know, certainly there's things like internal affairs that should be, but when you're talking about employees, I think having some outside experiences with, you know, just benefits, and obviously there are gonna always be certain things that come with, you know, employees that are dissatisfied, but it's not just about a place to complain. Sometimes it's a place to help employees, there could be employee assistance programs, things like that, that certainly the city of Revere offers. I think expanding that and having some sort of a role that focuses primarily on public safety departments will be very helpful. So that would, that's pretty much my rationale. All right? So yes, sure, happy to send that to Ways and Means. All in favor? It's ordered.
Calendar item number fifteen.
Did you want to speak on? On what? Sure, absolutely. Name and address for the record.
Thank you.
I apologize.
That's all right. I just wanted to say a few things. Mary Gindolfo, 619 Washington Avenue, Revere. So, you just heard tonight about all the loan orders, and you heard about how the water and sewer will probably affect the payers in the last, what we were just speaking of tonight. We have a very expensive high school that's about to be constructed at some point. I just want to say this. You know, when I see positions come up, some things are necessary, some things are really necessary, but new positions, I think, I just would like, you know, the council to watch out for the taxpayers and the seniors in the city, because we're really spending a lot of money right now. And I think you need to focus on the high school issue right now, rather than pull in other positions, because currently there is a position also in the job postings in Revere for a director of human resources right now. And that particular position pays quite a bit of money, eighty-two-hundred-and-ten-thousand a year. It's currently listed as a position open for the city right now. So, just that, you know, you can say, you know, we always need more help somewhere, and people, you know, maybe human resources needs some help somewhere, but to create a whole new position at this time with a high school that's, we don't even know the total amount it's gonna become. And all these, you saw all the loan orders tonight for all kinds of water and sewer and whatever. So, basically, I'm speaking for the taxpayers, the seniors, the homeowners, and the renters in the city, because if the homeowners get hit with money, it's gonna trickle down to the renters, because they need help to pay for it. The renters are gonna have to pay a lot more in rent also. So, the renters are not out of that picture when it comes to the finances of the city. So I'm just asking if we could be extremely careful right now with the money that we're spending, and make sure that it's needed. New positions, at this time, it might have to wait. It might have to wait for another year, a couple of years from now. Maybe there's someone you can put in, not call them a manager, yet they can help the director who's gonna be hired now. Maybe they should redo that director position, you know, to say that, you know, this is what you're gonna, maybe the director needs to take over that management role also and pay that director. I mean, there have been times, I know, lots of years of my work life when, where I worked, we couldn't hire three, four people. Everybody took on a little more, and that's how it goes. We're building a new school, please don't forget that. We don't have all this free money. And I see seniors having a hard time right now, and, no, honestly, I see seniors having a hard time right now, especially.
Mr. President?
Thank you, Counsel, Counsel McKenna?
I just want to say to you that I think what's gonna happen, and you're gonna see it, is probably when we get the budget, it's gonna be, we're really gonna tighten the belt in it. So, I think you're gonna see a lot of savings there.
You just took out one of my sentences. We have to tighten the belt.
Yeah, so I think that's what you're gonna see, because we are spending too much money, and Revere can't afford it, the people can't afford it. So I really do think you're gonna see a tightening of the budget this year. We're not gonna allow this and that like we usually do, because we've got a lot of things that are coming before us, are, ah, here, you know, a lot of bonding. So I think that's what you're gonna see, and I think that will be the answer to your questions.
So, yeah, I agree, it has to happen, but I think this position shouldn't pass, because I think it needs to wait for another time and places, it doesn't fit right now with.
Thank you. Well, nothing's passed, it's gonna be discussed in Ways and Means, and certainly, it would be, if it came down to it, there'd be a budget discussion and decision on it. So, thank you.
Calendar item number fifteen, motion presented by Counsel Visconti, that the city council present Sergeant Christianino with a certificate of merit in recognition of his retirement from the Revere Police Department after thirty-three years of commendable public
Counsel McKenna, and Counsel Visconti's.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. I'm gonna reserve my comments for the day that we actually present this award, or this recognition, it's well-deserved, and I want to congratulate him for his retirement, but I'll reserve my response and my comments.
Great motion, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. President? Counsel Serrino?
If through you to the maker of the motion, would the maker of the motion consider having the entire city council on that motion to honor the sergeant?
Absolutely not, no, but I'm kidding. I'm kidding, of course, of course, absolutely.
Any other councils? Any other councils?
Regarding Sergeant Janino?
Motion.
Yeah, no, I mean, I just want to say that I support the motion. I can't let this go by without saying what a tremendous career he had. I know I cannot speak on the night of the certificate, so at least tonight I can say something. He's had a tremendous career, he, you know, I know in my area, which is where he lives, you know, there's not many people more well-respected than him. And I have to say, it's been a privilege to be able to pick up the phone and call him when I've had issues over these many years that I've served in public office. He's always been incredibly responsive, and I believe he's gonna be sorely missed by the Revere Police Department. But, you know, it's been our gain over these many years, and I just want to wish him a lot of luck in the future going forward. Thank you, Mr. President, for the latitude.
No, no problem. Look forward to all saying something nice on the night of the event. All in favor? It's ordered.
Calendar item number sixteen, motion presented by Counsel McKenna, that the mayor requests the city-state delegation to direct the Department of Conservation and Recreation to renovate the pavilions along Revere Beach Boulevard. The pavilions in their present condition are unsightly and are showing signs of neglect, including broken benches, rust, chip paint, et cetera.
Counsel McKenna?
Thank you, I'm sorry this is coming up so late, and I know everybody's tired, but I just want you guys to look at the screen. This was brought to my attention by Arthur McDonald. The photos are his, and I'm just gonna read during the pitches. What is the biggest tourist attraction in Revere? Guess what? Revere Beach. We have spent millions of dollars on this beach developing apartments, restaurants, and hotels, bringing people in from all over the country and world to Revere Beach. If you look at the license plates, you can see this holds true. The city has even created a tourist department to bring people here. When they come across the street and they look at these deplorable pavilions, gazebos, and artifacts that are rotting away and falling apart, it's disgusting. This is the history of our beach, our city, and we are going to lose this if we don't take action or care of it now. I am asking the city, along with our legislators and DCR, to work together to come up with some sort of grants or money to restore and preserve this historical pavilions, lightpoles, gazebo, the gazebo's falling apart, artifacts, which is that, the artifacts that I'm talking about is the thing that squirts out, it has the face on it. So they can be admired by folks that visit our city, and for our generations that will follow us to have. And you can see by the pictures, the decay is not just from the winter. This is not three months of decay. They're not, then paint it, just paint it, make it look better. Just look at these pictures, they're disgusting. So, we have, we're spending all this money, and our historical, our landmarks are falling apart. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Serrino?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Counsel McKenna, this is a great motion, and I just wanted to give you a point of information, that in 2018, in the environmental bond bill, Speaker DeLeo, Rep. Vincent, and Senator Boncory got in this bond bill, ten million dollars for repairs and improvements to the Revere Beach Reservation, including, but not limited to, the renourishment of Revere Beach, repairs to any failing seawalls, transportation improvements, and restorations to pavilions and period lighting structures. So there is money, the bond bill, it's kind of like monopoly money, it's not always expended, but it is at the governor's discretion. So, that 2018 bond will expire, I believe at the end of this calendar year, or sometime this fall, because it was passed in the summer of 2018. But it might be worth reaching out to Rep. Turco, to Senator Edwards, and to the mayor, quite frankly, maybe the mayor can help leverage, you know, his relationship with the new governor and lieutenant governor, and try to get, obviously not all that money, but some of that money out of that bond, that bond bill to go toward this. Just an idea, and saying that the money is, it's already allocated, so it's just a matter of the governor releasing it. And obviously, the Baker administration only cared about putting meters on the beach, but hopefully the Healy administration, the Healy-Driscoll administration will be a little more amenable and try to help Revere Beach. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you, Counsel, great information. What about the Patrick administration, did they care about the beach? Yeah, sure. All right, all in favor? It's ordered.
Calendar item number seventeen, motion presented by Counsel McKenna, that the mayor requests the superintendent of Public Works to investigate the feasibility of installing an illuminated crosswalk and pedestrian crossing signalization at the Beechmont School for safe travel across Bennington Street. There is an existing crosswalk already at this location.
Counsel McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, I've had a numerous amount of calls. After the hours when the Crossing God leaves, the premises, ninety percent of the time, the light is always green. So, if pedestrians press the crossing button, the lights turns red. But drivers are so used to the light being green that they just keep going, they just avoid the red light. So what's happening is, they're blowing through the red light, and we've had a numerous amount of almost accidents that pedestrians were almost hit. So if you go to Winthrop or you go anywhere else, even East Boston started doing this, they have pedestrian lights that, they're solar, but they, there's lights around them. They have stop signs that there's lights around them. So I did call Paul Agenzio, and he said that I'd have to put this through the council, just so we could start the feasibility of what it's gonna cost us. But the first place we really need to put it is across the street from a school, you know? And he said it's DCR-owned or state-owned, and then they're not taking care of it. So we really need to address this, because someone's gonna get killed if we don't. Thank you.
Counsel McKenna, Counsel Morbeto?
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree with my colleague. Three days ago, our state just received more than thirty million dollars in federal funds to improve roadway safety. So I think we should look into some street program grants as well.
Thank you. Counsel Novoselfsky?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I can't agree more with Counsel McKenna, and just so, little reminder, a year and a half ago, I put a motion in that these signs be placed at all the schools in the city of Revere. And unfortunately, I was told by somebody in Planning and Development that it was put on the back burner. So I would hope that the back burner comes up front, and at least start it in Beechmont and work north of Ward 6. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councils? All in favor of the motion? It's ordered.
Calendar item number eighteen, motion presented by Counsel Zambudo, that the city council award a certificate of merit to the Domeno family in recognition of their ninetieth year of ownership of Domeno's Restaurant on Walden Street.
Wow, ninety years? All in the same location? Impressive. Counsel Zambudo?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be brief, because I'm gonna save most of my comments for the presentation. However, not only is this the oldest restaurant in the city, I think it's the oldest restaurant in the state now that Javelis is closed. So it's, you know, it's a fitting tribute to the Domeno family for the longevity, and so, like I said, we'll save the rest of my comments for that night. Thank you.
Mr. President? Mr. President, can I just say that, um, Counsel Zambuto, good motion. I think we should have them get their, um, certificate presentation.
Counsel Rizzo, thank you, Counsel McKenna.
Thank you. Once again, this is, uh, another, another well-deserved certificate. Lenny has been, uh, not just a personal friend to me, but he's been a friend to the city of Revere and so many families over these many generations, you know? He's passing the torch on now to his son LJ, uh, well, at least he says he is, but he seems to always be there, so I don't know how he's really passing the torch. But, um, one of the hardest workers I know, great food, great environment, great family restaurant, and, uh, a real, a real positive reflection on the city of Revere. So, uh, again, while I can't speak on the night of the, uh, certificate, that'll be up to, uh, our colleague Counsel Zambuto. I do want to congratulate him and his family for many, many generations of service to the city. Thank you.
Counsel Cogliandro?
Thank you, Mr. President. I also just, you know, I, I agree with this one thousand percent.